Whoops, I tried to cross out what is irrelevant to our town. So, starting with Saturday, as you probably all know, the Presidential Disaster Declaration got approved by the White House. And they said they're in the process of figuring this system and processing out with FEMA. They don't have all the answers yet. They reminded us to document all expenses. And we personally, Newton, you know Larry and I will be reaching out, calling department heads for any additional documents we might need, which includes people that, on their time sheets, we will need to know what they were hired for, how many hours they've worked. Nancy already knows this, I think she's been working on this, but now they're reminding us again today. They also said make sure that you follow the chain of command through the section chiefs on the state level. Do not call the call centers. They're just getting overrun with calls. And their information is given by the section chiefs according to the command structure. Also regarding planning, the governor encouraged stores to increase their capacity. And although some state parks remain open, they caution, they said use with caution, because now what's happening is people are going to parks and they're not respecting social distancing. And the trails, obviously, we're dealing with the same thing. There's more on parks and trails later on, so let me just keep going. They also said that the Emergency Order 24, which modified and clarified the Emergency Order 4, according to all the documents and extending the state of emergency. They said as of Saturday, we had 540 with COVID, 144 recovered, 389 total current, 6,965 negative, seven deaths, 94 persons with tests pending, and 3,813 specimens submitted to public health labs, with 80 persons being hospitalized. They're working on the budget for a major disaster declaration and the chiefs are familiar with this and the road agent, you know, we all will work together on this as we get more documentation. The local liaison commented and said she's had an awful lot of comments and questions about state parks. She reminded, don't encourage too much parking, monitor trails, close to team sport activities, because that's part of the problem. So, I don't know, tennis courts, ballparks, those kind of things. They're disseminating three daily COVID reports. Again, daily, that's intelligence. And they've added workforce to impact the analysis of first responders in quarantines as well as exposures. The list of businesses was addressed, essential or non-essential. And again, if anyone talks to you about that, refer them to N H economy dot com. And they can have questions or appeal if they feel that their business should be listed and it's not. They said we're going through PPEs, we're ordering as best we can, getting ourselves ready for shipments. They also said they've added eight National Guardsmen to the food bank starting today, Monday. They also said no PPEs.
Larry?
They also said no PPEs as of today. They've also talked about license sure and background checking volunteers. It has put in-
I'm sorry Trish, somebody just joined the call. They have their TV on in the background, so you're gonna need to mute your call.
Okay, thank you.
It was, Trish, just so you know, it was Larry and I muted his phone for him.
Oh, my poor boss.
Busted.
Okay, so again, what I was saying was the license sure and background checking, volunteer procedure has now been put in place. That's something they've been wanting to make it a little bit easier for volunteers. Also, the convenient MD testing information has been corrected. It was sent out over the weekend. There was an issue with what was sent out to us on Friday. They also commented that Hampton PD, and this again was Saturday, was helping to enforce beach closures. They've got an issue with crowd control in the parking lots and reminded us about our parking lots. They also had the JEXO, the Joint Information Command, reminded us about social media monitoring. Be careful what you put out there. They also said masks, there's a lot of discussion about masks, especially cloth ones. They're gonna be streamlining guidance on maps. Remember, as a municipality, try not to promote somebody that might have reached out to you because they want to help, because that ultimately could be a responsibility or a liability to the town if someone tests positive after a mask that the municipality recommended or promoted. There's property tax issue discussions going on. There's a lot of positive comments about stores reducing the number of people allowed in and enforcing spacing, so that was really good. Negative comments about out-of-state travelers coming to New Hampshire. And you probably saw the governor address a little of that on today's 3 o'clock call. Also, local discussion from healthcare providers concerning the lack of PPEs. They thanked everyone for keeping an eye on trails and parks. However, they dispatched some air patrol in some of the parks that have excessive use, just as a way of monitoring this. They also said on Saturday that they are transitioning some positions. So Jen Harper's gonna take over the state EOC as the manager and Fire Marshal Parisi will move to unified command. They said we're in a little bit of a lull right now, but more could be coming in soon. Reminded us as towns to make sure that we've got everything we need and that staffing is on set in case we have to move to 24/7, be prepared. They said need to be ready when this next wave comes and they'll be looking at schedules to give a better home-life balance on their current EOC staffing. That was Saturday. Sunday, now 621 cases, nine deaths, 86 hospitalizations. The disaster declaration on Friday from the Department of Health and Human Services continue to be a source with PPEs. They've handed over 700 work orders for alternate care sites and also isolation and quarantine sites. Again, military support is helping with the quarantine and all alternative care sites. They were working on a food bank mission for April 6th, I think that's today. Logistics, working on resources and all requests, but nothing major to report. They said partial deployment to Hampton Beach to help with parking enforcement. They directed patrol of highways leading to popular hiking spots and to disperse all large gatherings. Trails are being watched to make sure there's not too many people on walking trails. Parks, again, another conversation that would encourage team sports should not be used. While I'm at this, I'm gonna let you know that the Peanut Trail is gonna be closed probably three weeks from now, because we've got, the Beaver Wildlife Company is gonna be working there and he's gonna have equipment in on the trail. But that's just, we can talk about that later. Also, there's been cars at the end of the Peanut Trail entrance excessive over the weekend. And a little bit concerned about social distancing, since the trail is, in some places, only four feet wide. Conservation will be having a call later this week to take care of that. They also scheduled an air mission to alleviate concerns of large gathering by taking a look via the air for congested areas. They're working on signage and traffic near Pinkham Notch. Larry, we were able to actually help with some signage in exchange for some PPEs. So hopefully that will help them, since it's been such an issue. Continued reduction on train and flights. And again, reminded us, track your financing. On today's call, we have, let's see, let me go to the beginning here. The convenient MD is helping actually for first responders for testing. They should, should we need to send the first responder to a convenient MD, that we need to transport up to Concord that test so that we can get a fast result. Primex, any Primex towns, they said they've worked out terms with convenient MD, but still must do the first notice of injury. Also looking at unprotected exposure regarding gowns. They're gonna revisit this and get back to us. They said on the risk analysis, what is the patient's condition? When they're trying to determine exposed or not exposed. For instance, was the patient coughing or spitting up? Did they, was the first responder able to get a mask on the patient? And if so, then that might be considered a protected exposure. And these documents, they also said reminders that these documents, many that they're sharing on these conference calls should not be put out on social media. Because again, this is for first responders, EMDs, police, fire, and for us to share with the governing powers of the town. Director Harper said we've received the disaster declaration and they're gonna conduct, I'm stuttering here. We will conduct virtual briefings for the applicants next week, which basically means Larry and I have to get all, make sure that all our documents are in place once they start these virtual briefings. They know there's a lot of funding at the moment and they're working through numbers and ready to provide us guidance as soon as they can. Again, essential businesses, they reminded us, tell people to go to N H economy dot com for more information. Assistant Commissioner Perry Plummer said we're getting a finger-pricking test and hopefully that's gonna provide a fast result, but we don't have it yet. Also, if you're sending your department members to convenient ID, make sure you have the member of your department bring the sample again to the health lab in Concord, because we can't rely on the state couriers. He also said they'll be putting more guidance out on that. Primex, again, said reach out to them with any questions. They also said they're revisiting the algorithms that they published over two weeks ago and reevaluated the risk analysis. And they may need to rewrite it. They said they're gonna work with police, fire, CBC, and public health on a revision. And again, this is a reminder, these documents are not for public consumption. Another question from an EMD said will the fire departments and other non-transport units become transport units? They stand for, they want more guidance and they're figuring out how to deal with this, but there will be a waiver on how to handle this. And they hope that will be coming out this week. Another EMS person asked if the antibody testing is coming to the state to show individuals who have recovered and when they can return to work. The answer was hopefully yes, and that we'll have access to this type of testing and they'll let us know as soon as it's available. Another question about allowing EMTs to work on the trucks. And they're looking into getting provisional licenses and releasing a bulletin within the next 24 to 48 hours. And I believe, again, that was on provisional EMTs. Fire department said we have some inconsistencies with box dot com, account number of cases and the map that's published. It's just not meshing. And they asked if there's a way we can track people who are using post office boxes instead of residential addresses. And they said 911 is working on making sure addresses are physical places that responders could be dispatched to. They also said we'll get something in writing that reflects the algorithm. The list is real-time and the map is cumulative. You may have had cases that are now recovered in your area that are still showing on the map. And the lag between the two should only be about one day. And again, yes, we're gonna get a revised doc out and there will be guidance on this hopefully soon. Another fire department in the disaster declaration is the individual assistance, like special needs, mental health, and counseling services, still pending. And the answer is yes, we are not sure when we will hear on those, but as soon as we do, we'll let you know. And the last comment also from a public health person said public assistance side of the FEMA website, they had a question mark about that. And the answer was we're working on the disaster declaration and we'll be conducting virtual briefings for all the applicants starting next week. And that's it.
Good job. Great, thank you. All right, so, go ahead. Is that Larry again with his TV on?
I unmuted him if he needed to speak.
Oh, okay. All right, first thing I wanted to hit upon was, we got, I think we heard from everybody in regards to use of the Town Hall. And somebody, jump in here if I missed something, but seems to me Mary Jo needs access to the Town Hall and she's got like a limited schedule. It sounds like Kim needs access to the Town Hall. But my question for Nancy, and it's for Kim and Nancy, none of these files are electronic? Like, 'cause that's, that's what I read in both your emails, is that you have physical documentation that you had to take home. And I'm wondering why it's just physical, we don't have it electronically?
I think the software that Kim uses is electronically, but she deals with a lot of paper. So, department heads bring in bills or they bring in documents for her. And that's what I believe I read, was that everything is like hands-on and people are always dropping stuff off and, you know. I mean, that would be a real good question for Kim.
Okay, so, so something distresses me there. Are department heads still coming in to see her during this thing?
I don't, I think she said they were coming in to drop off payroll. But I'm not there, so I don't really know for sure.
Right, I think we need to-
She does check the mail every day, sorry.
Checking, checking the mail is something I don't think we can get away with. But if, if, nobody should be dropping, like, nobody should be coming in to see her if she's gonna stay there. And I, I wonder, is, I would think department heads would have access to scanners. So if they have documentation, they could scan it, is that a correct statement?
Well, they can if it's just like one document, like a payroll sheet or something like that. But a lot of them are the bills that are coming in. And there's different facets, if somebody's using a credit card, they've got the credit card slip as well as the invoice. And, and I think, I'm not exactly sure everything, but, you know, we could certainly have Kim be on the call tomorrow night or something if you want to ask those questions.
Yeah, maybe I'll-
Yeah, but not, not all department heads are gonna have access to scanners at their home as opposed to in the office. And when it comes to the bookkeeper, she does need the time sheets, which likely are being dropped off in her mailbox, not actually to her personally.
Right, that's correct.
I guess what I'm getting at is, I guess what I'm getting at is, these receipts, like, I, I can't tell you the last time I, I actually received a hard receipt other than, you know, Home Depot or the supermarket. I'm, I'm assuming these receipts come in electronic form. But I'm, we need the right person here to ask, so-
Right, exactly, yep.
We can table that. Now Nancy, you had to bring documentation home. What, what physical documentation do you not have electronically?
I have a lot of books and stuff at the Town Hall that I work with, like DRA stuff, so working on the, you know, the spreadsheets or whatever for the Warren article. So I brought home a bunch of stuff, so I won't have to go back. Like, impact fees and, you know, my revenues and that type of stuff are all in book form, because they're spreadsheets that I work on throughout the year. So I brought as much home as I could possibly do that I can update and whatever without having to go in there.
So I guess the, sort of the million-dollar question is, how are these, these documents are now in your house, how are they backed up?
Um, they're my working copies, they're not anything that, um, I don't think we have to worry.
So they're not records we need to-
No, they're not originals, no.
Okay. All right, so, and then I saw on there Jim Doggett needs access to make copies, so.
I think Diane can speak on that one, 'cause I saw an email from her to him.
Okay. Diane, did you wanna-
Yep, okay, this is Diane. So I spoke with, I emailed Jim and he set up one of the tablets that he purchased from the town and that's gonna be his working PC. But what he does need is long-distance calling. And I thought maybe we could just reassign the town cellphone that we have, just give it back to him to use for this time, so he can make long-distance calls as needed as the planning board administrator.
That's what I was thinking. Anybody on the board I wish was there?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Okay, so I can reissue that to him?
Yep.
He also said that the only other times he comes in is to check the mail. Now, if Kim is there and doing the mail, she could just text him when he gets email, I mean gets regular mail and then he can make arrangements to come in and pick it up.
Right.
That, that'll keep him out of there as well.
Yeah, I guess my thing is, limit, if people have to be there, then we limit when they're there together. Not bumping into each other at the copy or whatever, so.
Right, well, he, she, Kim could just put it in his mailbox and tell, you know, he could just come in when he, she's not there.
Yep.
That was my plan, Matt, go in on Fridays.
So Kim's not there on Fridays?
No, nobody should be there on Friday.
Okay, so, the, the thing with Jim is to designate Jim a day. If Jim actually has to go in there and make copies, do it on X day. Now, I would assume, and I'm, I'm totally going out on a limb, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but they don't have any meetings in April. The meetings have been canceled, so I'm not sure what he'd have to make copies of.
Right, that's correct.
If he got any kind of applications, he would have to make the man and copy them and send, you know, get them ready for their next meeting.
Right. They might also want to, they might also want to consider, and I'm, I'm not talking to the right audience again, but they might also want to consider just emailing everything, 'cause nobody's gonna have physical copies in the, you know, they're not gonna be in a room where you're passing out paper copies, is what I'm getting at, so. They'll be on the phone likely, but, all right, so.
Yeah, that's the thing the planning board has to work out. I don't know what they have for computers, each of them, if they're able to do that, but.
Yeah, and Matt, the planning board typically mails out packets to the planning board members.
Do they really?
Yes, they do.
Oh my goodness, okay. All right, that's killing some trees right there. All right, so I guess I have on my list Mary Jo, Kim, Nancy, just to check the mail, Jim for unlimited purpose, anybody, and Tina for the food pantry. Am I missing anybody?
Well, this is Diane, and I do, I go in, but it's so infrequent. Like, tomorrow I need to go in to meet with somebody at 9:00 AM to, to get a quote for removing the sprinkler heads. But I avoid it as much as I can.
Is there any way that you can get a quote from that person without meeting with them physically?
No, they have to look at the, at the job to get the heads off.
You should maybe leave when they do that or be out of the building.
Yep, I could do that, or just stay away from them. I'll just practice-
Yeah, exactly. Just six feet.
Far, far away. They're saying more than six feet in enclosed spaces without ventilation.
Yeah, man, we can't, we can't be leaving non-employees alone in the Town Hall either.
Well, we don't want to leave them alone, but you don't have to be, you know.
Hey Diane, can you wear all that gear you wore last time I saw you?
I broke my face shield, I know, but I broke my face shield.
You're around there putting-
But yeah, I will, I will practice good face-keeping, face distancing, and wear a mask and gloves.
Yeah, 'cause like in the, like if you look at the S tree, if they're in their gear, they don't have to worry if they're near someone supposedly, so wear what you can, please.
Yeah, as a contractor, they might know better than we do at this point. They're visiting everybody.
Matt?
Yeah, go ahead Nancy.
Is it necessary to do this now in the situation we're in?
Do what? I'm sorry, you broke up there Nancy, what was it?
The sprinkler heads, meeting with people and stuff. Why do we even worry about that right now? Nobody's in the building per se. Why not wait until after the virus is over and then deal with it?
That sounds sensible. I agree completely, now that I think of it.
Um, I-
As long as we're in code.
Can I speak to this? Fire chief, because this is part of the issues that were brought up.
Hello, if you're gonna ask my opinion, the building has been non-compliant since the day they installed those sprinkler systems, those heads. Wait in a couple of weeks, the fire department doesn't have a problem with that, but you might want to also check with building also.
Yeah, I think, I think my position would be, if we think we can put it off, there is, there is a, you know, it might be an opportunity too for him to do some work in the building when nobody's there, once he installs it. But I don't have a problem either way at this point, it's up to the board.
Well, this is Diane, and that is what my thought was. This is gonna make a mess, so I'm just giving you quotes at this point.
Yeah, sure.
That's all he's gonna do, he's only giving me a quote. And then you can decide when you want to do it. My thought process was to get it done before we reopen, to clean up the mess. Now we did, there's nobody in the building when he's doing that, whoever you choose.
All right, so is the board good with that, we're just getting quotes at this point?
I'm good with it, Matt. I'm good.
So, so let's keep doing that Diane and just, you know, you know, you know what we're talking about as far as keeping your distance and all that good stuff. And we'll review, thank you. So I had brought up on an email today Nancy, Tony is not coming into the Town Hall currently, right?
That's correct, and Mike, who had also said that he could stop, so he hasn't been coming in for probably the last three weeks, two weeks, three weeks now.
Okay, he wasn't on the COVID list?
Yeah, he was, he was on the second page.
Oh, there's a second page?
On the first page, halfway down, yeah. And then the second page was the library.
Oh, okay, then, I didn't realize there was a second page, I'll have to look, my bad. All right, great.
Matt?
Go ahead Trish.
I'm sorry, finish the thought process with Nancy and then I just have something I need to ask.
No, I think I was switching gears, so go ahead.
Okay, so, as far as going to Town Hall, I, every two weeks, when Kim has the manifest and payroll ready, I go in to pick up copies that Larry and I need. And I don't know if there's a way that you can maybe ju, she makes me a copy, so she's at the printer, if you can maybe just scan, you know, enter my information in that printer so she can scan it to me, now I don't have to come to Town Hall.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yep. I mean, that's, that's kind of the, the theme of the whole thing is, if Kim or anybody else has the ability to email or scan then email, that's what she should be doing.
Right.
Lessons learned.
This is the offender in email. Okay, I will.
All right, cool. All right, so we're off that topic, anybody else, COVID-related?
I have a question.
Go ahead Nancy.
So we're scheduled to have the porta potty at the Greenie Park put in on April 13th. Do you want us to hold off on that for a while?
Yes, please.
I would say yes.
I'd say yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought too, but I just wanted to double-check.
That'll deter people from going to Greenie Park, 'cause they won't be able to be-
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
The, and while we're on that subject, I assume- The, um, and, and while we're on that subject, I assume, I assume the parking lot to the beach is locked. Is that the?
There's no way to lock it.
There's no way to lock it.
So the parking lot is wide open, but the gate is locked.
I don't know if there's even a gate anymore. I'm not sure. 'Cause the way the new fence went in, yeah, the way the new fence went in, there's no gate anymore.
Yeah. So, Chief Jewett, um, do you know, has there been any activity over there? Um, is there any way to maybe coordinate off, anything like that?
I'm not familiar with any activity. I know they're still doing direct patrols and checking it. I haven't heard any major activity. Um, we can try to put up like a police line tape across the parking lot if you want, or put some cones or barricades across it.
Yeah, whatever makes sense.
The gate that you're referring to, I think was, that's like the emergency access gate over where the porta potty used, or typically is there. Um, so nothing in the front of the parking lot.
Okay.
Is that something that you wanted to do?
Yeah, I think we did police tape on the playground, so maybe that's, what do you guys think? Wanna do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. If we could, that'd be great.
No problem.
Thanks. Um, anything else?
I have a couple of quick things, Matt, not so much with COVID when you're ready.
Uh, Co. Yeah, go.
Uh, two things. One, we had a request yesterday for another drive-by for birthday party. I know the board voted a few weeks ago and then it was, uh, as needed basis to go in front of the board. Is there any way the board could just vote to authorize the fire department? If I have the members willing to do it, to just do drive-by birthday parties, so I don't have to keep on coming to the board?
Yeah, the only problem was my birthday was two weeks ago and I didn't see you guys.
Yeah, mine too, it was in December and I didn't see you.
We were never invited.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I think for me and the rest of the board can chime in. For me, the thing is, if it's gonna put you in an awkward position where you're gonna be spread thin doing this, I think it's a bad idea. But from a PR standpoint, I think it's a nice thing to do, even if we're doing it a lot. What's the rest of the board think?
I, I agree with, with that statement, Matt, completely. We need PR.
Yeah.
I agree. How much does it cost to do it though? Nothing? Just gas?
Absolutely nothing.
Great, I'm for it.
Yesterday, yesterday, yesterday we had a phone call, uh, last minute. The two guys, the two members were already in the station, so they're ready on company time. Whatever it's gonna take for diesel fuel to take one truck and drive by that five-year-old's, five-year-old's house, which unfortunately we couldn't do 'cause I had to go in front of the board, uh, ten bucks in diesel fuel. We spend more.
I think it's worth it.
On diesel fuel for, uh, the Santa parade than we would do a birthday, a drive-by birthday every Saturday and every Sunday until this, uh, virus passes.
Yeah.
So, so you're planning on doing it just on, once on Saturday, once on Sunday? At most?
No, that, that's when they've usually called. We'll do it on a Tuesday if somebody has a birthday party on a Tuesday, as long as the members are in the station. But the thing is, is unfortunately, like I said, they called about an hour before they went on social media to plan a drive-by for this five-year-old, uh, and Peter Jana Lunis, who was on shift, had to explain to mom that we have to go in front of the board to get permission to do it. So the fire department did not do it yesterday.
Cool. So, um, here's, here's what I think, rest of the board jump in if, if this isn't good. I think, I think we should empower the chief to make the decisions on this, but we should not advertise in any way that this is available. It should be case by case, chief makes the call and we go from there.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I, I do think that we should, um, be informed as to how often this turns out to be. You know, i- if he's going out every day or a couple of times a day because people've gotten the word, so to speak. Um, I, I think, you know, once or twice a week I can understand, um, but every day or something to that effect, that's a lot of people together, a lot of traveling and use of the equipment for really non-fire business, other than PR.
But, once, once again, not to be the bad guy here, if even a five-minute drive-by, if you do, I'm not good at math, I don't have a calculator. We run fi, four to five fire apparatus for 10 hours on the Santa parade. That usually runs about 400 to 500 on fuel. Last year, it cost $1,500 on a vehicle repair. Personally, I don't have a problem doing a birthday every day, seven days a week, 'cause it's not gonna be forever, forever, I'm sorry. It's probably gonna be for another month. It, I don't have a problem with it, but again, it's up to the board of selectmen. You, the board will always know 'cause you'll see it on social media. If, if we say no, we're gonna be on social media. If we say yes, the board will see it on social media. That's why we're leaving it up to the board. If you leave it up to me, you call and I have the guys available, we're gonna go.
So, the only thing I don't.
Go ahead, Matt.
So the only thing I don't.
Go ahead.
Go ahead Charlie.
No, you go ahead, Matt, you have, I'll, I'll talk after.
I agree with everything that chief said except for the use of social media. If, we should not be doing anything on social media. If, if the people who, uh, have the child wanna take pictures on social media, that's great. But I don't wanna make, I don't, I don't want people getting on social media and saying, hey Newton Fire, come to my house for my party. If they wanna pick up the phone or send an email or a private message, that's one thing. I, I hope that's what you meant, chief.
Yeah, I, I apologize. We don't, uh, just like the, the last one with the young man's birthday, uh, the parents put it on social media and then the fire department, I believe, uh, just liked it. We don't go, we're not advertising for it. We, we're getting the phone calls.
Right. Charlie, you wanted to jump in?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good. I got my question answered.
Alright, excellent. Alright, so is the board good? I don't think we need a motion as long as we're all in agreement. The chief is gonna be empowered to do this and then he can keep us informed with some sort of, um, you know, I don't know, email summary. I, I don't wanna see an email every time you do it, but maybe at the end of the month you tell us how many times. Does that sound good?
No problem.
Alright.
Yep.
Yep, that works for me also.
Okay, so my birthday is next March, so. Remember, we're gonna remember this conversation.
We sure are.
Alright, um, so, anything else, uh, chief, you said you had a couple things, was there another one?
Yeah, just, just another quick one. Uh, I, I know I spoke with Chief Jewett last week in regards to the mailbox at the fire station. The PO box for the fire department and for emergency management expired the end of March. Uh, so I, I would assume the federal government is gonna shut down our PO box any day now for lack of payment. Uh, they're asking for the $75 for the one year again. Is there any way to put a fire and get the mailbox installed like yesterday at the sa, public safety complex? Or is it planned already to be installed? Or should I just take $75 and go pay for a year for a PO box for the EOC, especially with everything going on now? We're, we're getting, uh, Director Foot's mail as much as we're getting the fire department's mail. And let, we won't forget getting police station mail now and then and town hall mail now and then in that PO box.
Do we have a, uh, quote for install for the PO box?
Yes. Matt?
Yep.
Matt, I got one from Gibbs this afternoon.
Okay, how much?
Uh, $3.75.
What's the board?
Him buying the con, him digging the hole, him, uh, uh, paying for the concrete, uh, setting up the post and coming back and backfilling around it and putting the mailbox on.
Okay.
And I, I have a written quote.
Okay. Is, uh, what's the board think?
Get it done.
Diane was, Diane was supposed to get a quote. I don't know if she's got one or not.
That, that's fine, let's just get it done.
Yep, get it done.
Quick question if I may. Quick question, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Is, has a location been picked out already? For the mailbox?
I don't know. Has it?
I'd, I would assume that would be you guys.
I can shed a little light. I think Chief Jewett told me it was going to be over near the, um, uh, where Eastern Seaboard's offices. I think they talked with the, the police, uh, the post office, um, person, and that's where they said it would be easier to access.
That's, I can, just, just for the board, that's a beautiful location, if that's what Chief Jewett and the, uh, postmaster had a lo, a location for it.
Is chief still on the line?
Oh, I'm still here. Um, so yeah, I, I spoke with the postmaster. Um, they basically said it would be on the downside of the driveway, um, closest to the Butler Building due to mileage and if they had to get out of the car because of, they have to pay the post, the delivery by foot. Um, so that's why they were recommending it there, so they could do a U-turn and come back around from the passenger side. Um, I got a phone call into the postmaster, again, just to double check to make sure exactly where they want it, uh, so we could get that installed yesterday.
Alright, so, um, let's, can we just, I think Diane was getting another quote, so let's, uh, let's approve the amount and then we can just go from there. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Matt?
The only thing I, I have, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
What am I gonna, what am I supposed to do in the meantime? We're going on a week of lack of payment for a PO box.
I don't know what happens. I, I've never had a PO box, so I don't know if they send the mail back, if the mail just stacks.
I, I don't know, when I go in there, my key doesn't work.
I'm embarrassed to admit this, but what they do is, I know from firsthand experience, what they do is they stack your mail. So, when you, when you come back, you, you basically have to, you have to pay to get your mail back, but I think you can pay for a shortened period. So, what's 75 bucks for? Is that for a year or six months?
Uh, I, not 100% sure.
Six months.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, I don't know. If, if we have to get the mail back, 75 bucks is probably, but let's have a permanent solution and get the, the mailbox installed.
Matt?
Nancy?
Yeah, um, I know if you do pay it, I don't know if Kim would have it, I doubt she has it on this week's manifest, but if we do pay it and we close it out sooner, they'll give a credit back of whatever's left.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's on the manifest, 'cause I don't, I don't think we, we told her to hold off, but I don't know.
Alright, let's do this. Does anybody mind if we put this on the agenda for tomorrow night to vote on it? And just, let's get some more info? Cool.
Not a problem for me.
When can Gibbs get through it, Charlie, do you know?
I gotta be honest with you Diane, I did not ask, but I know that if I pressure him, I can get it ASAP.
I would suggest, the person that I contacted today definitely won't get to it, 'cause maybe next week, if that. So I would suggest that you go with Kim.
Yep.
Well, if you do that, what I'll do is I'll call, not to interrupt you, Matt, I will call him tonight and ask him exactly when he can and have that information for you, click, click tomorrow night, if you want.
Sounds.
Or I could, or I could ask him, hey, can you do it ASAP, you know, can you do it now? And, uh, whoever's gonna sign this paperwork, uh, okay, 'cause he has a copy for them and a copy for us.
Yeah, so let's, uh, get that info for tomorrow night and that sounds, sounds good. If we have kind of a date in mind for tomorrow night, that'll help.
Yep.
They will give the chief, they will give the chief a chance to double check with the postmaster, make sure we're putting it in the right spot too.
Right.
Alright. Are we done with the post office box? Alright.
Hope so.
I hope so too. Anybody got anything else? Alright, I have the last one for this evening. Uh, random acts of kindness. What does the board think about getting, uh, Dunkin' Donuts gift certificates for every member of PD Fire and Highway?
Is Dunkin'?
I'm thinking enough.
I'm not having a problem with that.
How much you talking though?
Well, I don't drink coffee.
50 cents.
Right. I don't drink coffee. What is, what is a, I mean, is $10 too much?
Is that better than pizza for them?
It, what's that? Mr. Chair, if I may?
Hold on, Kate said something?
I'm just saying, let, let chief say it, 'cause I was just wondering if they, what, if they would prefer that over pizza.
What, what I was gonna say, we have, if you do $10, which I, we've, the fire department has received Dunkin' Donuts gift cards from $10 up to $30, just keep in the back of your mind, there are 24 or 25 individuals on the fire department at $10 apiece. We are the biggest public safety department. Uh, I don't know if the board wants to do it, instead of doing the entire department, to the individuals that are working, uh, the 12-hour day shifts and the overnight shifts for doing, uh, COVID-19, that, that would cut it down to almost half. But again, it, it's gonna be up to the board to answer Kate's question for pizza. The fire station's technically closed, with the exception of the duty individuals. Uh, so if the board decided to get five pizzas, nobody's gonna eat them except the duty guys.
And they'll eat it all.
Well, at least one will take it home, we know that.
Right. Well, my, that's why I was thinking gift certificates, because you can use them at your leisure type thing.
Yes.
So, um, so I'm thinking $10 can get you a coffee and a sandwich or a muffin or something. And so if you add, I, I hear what the chief's saying about the duty individuals, but if, even if we had like 24 on the fire side, Chief Jewett, I think, what would you say, is it eight?
I've got, uh, well, seven full-time that I've got a handful parts on.
Yeah, so, you know, let's round number 35 times 10, 350 bucks, are we alright with that?
I am.
Yes. I think it's a great idea, but where's the money coming from?
So, that's, where would it, it's gonna be on the board of selectmen, so can we take it out of, um, where would we take it out of?
I do have, I do have some money in the executive budget, but I think I only budgeted 300.
Yeah.
So we just have to figure out where it's gonna come from.
Hey, Matt?
Larry?
Matt, so I'll deny my gift card, but pass it on to the deputy, uh, Trish Paccotti for doing her work, okay?
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, thank you for pointing that out, Larry. We should, should be giving it to Trish as well. It's kinda like, kinda like that. That, right, exactly. I, I kinda forget they're a separate department, but, um, yeah, it's the idea of the, you know, for this week anyway, the, we already had the transfer station, they were easy to get in one shot with lunch, and now we get these folks who are, you know, the first responders essentially, so, um, I would, I'll make a motion to spend no more than four hundred dollars on gift certificates to Dunkin' Donuts or Heavenly Donuts, um, for the first responders in town. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Charlie was the second. Uh, roll call, all in favor, Kate?
Aye.
Larry?
I'm gonna nay on it, 'cause it involves me, okay?
Sure. Lisa?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, and Charlie, you're an aye, right?
Yep.
Okay, so-
So, quick question, Larry, did you abstain?
Yes, he did.
Yes, Diane, yes.
Okay, 'cause you said nay, so I'm just making sure.
He doesn't like coffee, and he doesn't like Dunkin' Donuts. I've never seen him drinking coffee.
Just making sure.
Matt?
Go Nancy.
We can still have it come out of that same account, even if it's over expended. I've probably got other money in there that I can steal from.
Okay, great.
Just, just saying.
This is a public meeting, Nancy.
Yeah.
Well, you-
And use the word steal.
You know what I mean.
Well, we know.
So, what I'd like to do-
Morrow, how's that?
What I'd like to do, if possible, is if, if, uh, if there's any way, like, the two chiefs can work with Nancy on this, and maybe Nancy can call in the order to one of these places, and a member of the department can go pick them up, so Nancy doesn't have to pick them all up? Does that work?
That's fine. Fire department don't have a problem with that.
Okay, and, and don't tell her, but Chief Elquino, can you put Trish in your head count?
We see Trish almost every day at the station, she's programmed in there.
Alright, so don't tell her we're doing this for, so.
And do the chief get to decide which-
She'll never know.
Never.
And the chief decides which donut place?
Yeah, and the, whatever makes sense for your department. Chief Jewett and I always talk about Heavenly Donuts, so, I don't know.
Matt?
All these, go ahead and answer.
Just so you know, the fire chief does have, and so doesn't the police chief have a Visa card, so they could use one of theirs. They don't have to use mine. That way, they can just go buy the cards and then put the bill in the market as, um, you know, whatever.
Yeah, if they're comfortable with that, as long as it doesn't end up in their budgets, it's coming from-
No, it won't. I'll make sure Kim posts it under executive.
Alright, so both- Okay, Chief Jewett, you're good with that?
Sounds perfect, thank you.
Alright, thank you guys, and extend our thanks, uh, to these guys and gals. Alright, anybody want to, uh, close the meeting?
Uh, before you close, before you close the meeting?
Yep.
Diane?
Do you want to do the minutes from April first, so I can just post them?
Anybody?
And I believe those are non-public and public, April first.
I moved to accept the public and non-public minutes for April first.
Second.
Charlie seconded. Uh, Kate, did you second for discussion?
No, I just seconded.
Okay, so Charlie won, so all in favor, roll call, Kate?
Aye.
Aye by Kate. Lisa?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, so you get five there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, now, who's get the motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn at six fifty-six PM.
Alright, Lisa wins out one second.
Oh, I'll second it.
Charlie seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Well, have a good night, everybody, and unfortunately, we'll see you tomorrow night as well. Well, talk to you tomorrow.